It's called the City Marine City Commission Meeting to Order. Marine City Fire Hall, Thursday, August 15th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. Can we please take a moment of silence for our dearly departed? And let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call please.
Mayor Van Bosh.
Here.
Commissioner Bryson.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Callahan.
Here.
Commissioner Clausen.
Here.
Commissioner Merchant is absent. Commissioner Verkanen.
Here.
I'll make a motion that we excuse Paul Merchant.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to communications, any motion to receive and file department activity reports, the Marine City Area Run Report, a letter from Bill Greitup, the Sinclair County Board of Commissioners, Pension Board meeting minutes of April 30th, and the Pension Board Retirement Healthcare meeting minutes, April 30th.
So moved.
Support. Any questions or concerns on the communications? Yes?
The letter from Bill Greitup, he did want to have read aloud, pretty much what the summary of it is, is just to make sure that people think about the coming winter with their boats, sorry, with their boats, and to consider storing them on ground this year because of the high water and the ice floes, it may be an issue, so he just wanted to have people consider that.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Wait a minute, did I get a...I did, okay. Opposed? Carrie. Thought I forgot to do a...she usually speaks before the motion, so...all right, moving on to public comment. Anyone in attendance, welcome to address the City Commission, please state your name and address, limit your comments to five minutes. This time it's for you to raise issues, the Commission will not respond, but the issues will be followed up upon as necessary. Hearing none, we're going to move on to approval of the agenda.
So moved. Support.
Questions or concerns on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Moving on to approval of the City Commission Regular Business Meeting, August 1st, 2019.
Make a motion that we accept the City Commission Regular Meeting Minutes from August 1st, 2019, as submitted.
Support. Motion, support, any questions on it? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Moving on to the consent agenda, I'm going to need a motion to approve a business license for Newport Pub LLC, Kick Cancer, Inc., a special event, and a special event for the Ten Year Automotive Memorial Car Show.
So moved. Support.
Any questions on those three?
I have a question.
Yes.
So, for the Newport Pub, when it says Description of Business, pub, I mean, do we require them to tell us if there's going to be food, alcohol, pub, I mean, I'm just asking?
It's my understanding they're not going to have food, the building officials spoke with them, they don't have the room for it, so it's strictly...
So drinks? No appetizers?
They, I don't know what their plan is, but they told her that they would like to look at getting a food truck in the future to come on weekends.
Yeah, I was just wondering, because I thought Description of Business should be a little more descriptive.
Yeah, I thought it would help to have more information.
Okay.
If we're going to...
Yeah. And there was another one, too. Elaine, what did we talk about? Oh, Ten Years Automotive.
Ten Years Location.
Was it Ten Years?
Yep.
Yeah. Location, Ten Years, it just says Ten Years Automotive, like an address?
213 Catherine.
That's their house.
Oh, that's the street where Ten Years is.
Yeah.
That's Catherine Street.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's for real.
Any other questions on the consent agenda? If not, let's have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkanen.
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to unfinished business, we have Ordinance Number 2019-10, the Engine Brake Second Reading and Adoption. Can I get a motion for the second reading and adoption?
I'll make a motion for the second reading of 2019010, the Engine Brake Ordinance and its adoption.
Support.
Motion, support, any questions on it?
So, how long after this, how many days, you got to post it?
Yeah, it's usually, let's see, thirty, it's fifteen days, we'll have it, it'll be ready to go by mid-September.
Okay, all right.
And then, did Mike have any feeling how long it'll get for the sign?
Two to three weeks for the signs.
So about, just a little bit more than adoption, so...
Okay. As I do know, I know the police have, per a resident's request, have talked to the stone piles again, but I know, going that route, they're still using the Engine Brake.
Well, this should take care of that.
I think it would behoove them to post something at the gravel yard forum, to, just so everybody, you know.
Yep.
And I might pass that along to one of the managers of the stone yard, just to make sure they know about it, see if, help us pass the word.
Sure.
I see that one stone yard closest to the boat launch, they've got water squirting on the tires now?
Yep.
Is that really helping, or it seems like it's getting the road awful wet, and then you get the cream?
It does keep the dust down, though. The, one of the stone yards in Marysville used to do that, and it actually kept fresh and much cleaner than just letting the dust pour out. It's an attempt, anyway, to help.
It helps, but I think there's still work to be done there.
Mm-hmm.
You're still getting a lot of sediment building up in the curb, and once the road dries out, especially in the weekend, when they may not be running trucks or as many trucks, then the dust comes right back.
Yeah, that's cool.
Yeah.
So they still need to clean the curbs?
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah. They're out there with the street sweeper, not as often as I think that they should be. We have been on them and talking to them about it, and we'll just keep trying.
It would help if they used water.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Would help if they used water instead of just blowing the dust around, I mean, that's...how old is those people, take a lot of dust?
Any other questions or concerns on the Engine Brake? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkanen.
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to the Infrastructure Committee Recommendations.
At our last meeting, we had the original recommendation from the Infrastructure Subcommittee to pave Ward Street from M-29 to South Bell River. You directed us to reconvene and select another road, knowing that we would need to do a budget amendment. The group met again, and the other road that we selected was North Market Street from Broadway to Westminster. The two projects together have an estimated cost of $128,000, so that would require a budget amendment of a little more than $20,000 in the future, once we get the project plans, the engineering and everything done, bid the project out, we'll have a better idea of what the costs are, and then do the budget amendment following the project.
Sounds good.
The question on that, so you're going to leave the section between Westminster and Market?
Evidently, there is a, there's a two-inch made.
Was that what he's saying here on that?
Yep.
Yeah.
That very little section?
Yeah, and he does not want to...it's in a very tenuous condition, he does not want to risk.
As I mentioned in my memo, that's something that would add a much larger amount of cost to the project, having to do that water line as well.
And when do you plan on doing this?
When do we plan on doing this? We put together the engineering specs and go out for bids in the winter.
So these won't be done until next year?
Be...this was in the budget for this year, it wasn't approved until July, I mean, so we talked about it, the last time we did a road, bidding out late in the season, you didn't get favorable bids, so we didn't bid it out, we can bid it out, and you can see what kind of bids you get, and if they're not favorable, then rebid it.
Absolutely. I think we should give it a shot, trying to get something done this year, yet.
Yeah, we can...
Has the gas company finished there? They've been working on that section for replacing the gas lines?
It's still going to take a little bit of time to get the engineered drawings. I would use Wade Trim to get the engineered drawings, we used to get this type of work from Tetra Tech, and with them no longer being our engineering provider for the treatment plants, we've been utilizing Wade Trim for planning, and I have a, we have a good established relationship with them, and I would look to shift some of our engineering proposals to them, including working on this road. One other thing that they will be working on, is kind of a side project, is the grant that we got for the water feasibility. Wade Trim is the engineer for East China, so they already have all of the information for that, it'll make the project a little bit cheaper, and as I said, we work with them for planning, so we have an established relationship.
Yeah, I just want to make sure the gas company's done, so that we don't pave and then dig it back up like we did on West Boulevard and the other one, so I just want to make sure they're finished completely before that's paved.
Yeah, we're looking at paved roads, and I'm just, the other question is that, everyone, we're looking at the stuff, we're trying to figure out what roads aren't going to be tore up, I guess the question would be is, are we doing something with Mike or the City Council, any, whatever it is, to look at what streets we're going to do with the infrastructure, so we can pave them, because if we're just waiting for sewer and water...
Yeah, we talked about that, I think you were not at one of those meetings for the Infrastructure Subcommittee, that we talked about a project for the next fiscal year, that would be an infrastructure one, where we would actually be doing the water and the road.
Using the...
Using water and sewer funds and road funds.
Okay.
Yeah, so that'll be forthcoming as our next project.
Any other questions on this?
So, we're going to try to move forward to try to get a bid and do this this year?
Yeah, I can certainly try and push it through, and when you guys get the bids, if you think that they're desirable enough to move forward, we can certainly do that. If not, we can just rebid it in February.
Yeah, I think that sounds like a great plan. Can I get a motion for that?
I'll make a motion, we proceed with the repaving of North Market Street in addition to the Ward Street that was previously approved, the board's.
For $128,000.
Oh, for $128,000.
Motion, support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hold on, roll call.
Roll call.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkanen.
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to personal policies and procedures. Elaine, you want to explain some of this?
Sure, I can. So, I worked with the firm Plunkett &amp; Cooney, our HR specialist legal firm, on really doing a thorough examination and rewrite of our personnel policies and procedures, based on what we currently have. The formatting was streamlined to make it a little bit easier, and restructured to group stuff that is specific to the city and other stuff that is not specific to the city, more so federal legislature. The 1991 resolution that we used to have in the beginning, that was incorporated into the introduction of the document, so we no longer have to have a copy of a resolution in the document. Most of the rest of it was to change and update based on current law, and to streamline and get rid of some of the bulk of material that we really did not need in there anymore. There is a page that I handed out for a correction, there was a little section that somehow or another wound up getting deleted, and that's just regarding the health insurance.
Yes, please.
I'd like to make a motion to table this until the next meeting, because I'm waiting on some additional information that I've requested, and there's some being that we got this late, and there's quite a few things I'd like to sit down and talk to the city manager about on some of this before we push it through, but...
I did get some of the information that you requested. Lisa had requested the last seven employee payouts from people that had either retired or left. They range in value from $4,000 to $22,000, up to 955 hours of payout time. In contrast, what we currently have with our staff, we have the highest amount of time that we have with an existing employee is 1,197 hours, and that's police, which actually is subject to the union contract, not the personnel policy and procedure manual. The next highest is Mike Ittrich at 902 hours.
Well, I'd still like to review everything, make sure that's exactly what I was asking for. So, I'm just asking for one more meeting to go over the rest of this stuff, and then we can have at it.
Do you have support to table this?
I'll support it, so we can get to discuss it, what we do, we were. But I was, I've been a couple other municipalities, and I see that going away in theirs, and yet we're increasing ours.
Increasing?
We're not increasing.
Well, they're, they're still adding to the hours, aren't they?
A lot of communities are getting rid of these extra...
When there's a motion to table, all you debate is the motion to table, and you stay away from the substance.
Till next time.
If the motion to table fails, then you go back to the substance.
Okay, since this is a non-dollar amount, we can have a regular vote, I take it, right?
This would be just on the motion to table.
Table, right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, table till next meeting.
Thank you.
And then we're moving on to City Commission Rules and Procedures.
Can I just ask with that last item, that everyone hang on to their copy, so we don't need to make another copy of the document? Thank you. All right, moving on to the City Commission Rules of Procedures, so based on the feedback that we received, the previous meeting, worked with the attorney on creating a red line review of this, I'm sorry, a red line edit of the City Commission Rules. The primary things that were changed regarding consistency, legality, we did change around the order of business to make it more compliant with law. We also changed the process for the closed session meeting minutes. The way that it was written, we in essence would have to go into closed session during the meeting, in the middle of the meeting, to change the meeting minutes and then come back out, so we'd have to kick everyone out of the room and then let them back in. This gives us a little smoother procedure, where we can just shift it off to the next meeting at closed session at the end of the meeting, to make it easier for people attending. We have also incorporated the motion table, and that is at the end. Anything else that you would like to add about that?
No, just, you know, I'd just like to remind you on the consent agenda, if you notice in our proposed new lineup, Order of Business, page three, number eight, we now have an item where it's items removed from the consent agenda. In the practice of, and the origins of a consent agenda, people review what's in the consent agenda prior to the meeting, and somebody moves approval of the consent agenda, there's a second, but there's no discussion on any item in the consent agenda. You either approve the consent agenda, you remove an item from the consent agenda, or you don't act on the consent agenda. So, we have a habit, it's not a bad thing, but we get to the consent agenda and then we discuss it, a few of the items. If you want to discuss an item on the consent agenda, you should remove it from the consent agenda and pass the balance of the consent agenda. So we now have a spot on your Order of Business for items removed from the consent agenda. So like tonight, if you have a question, you had a question on something that was in the consent agenda, you just say, "I'd like to remove item blank from the consent agenda," and then we move to pass the balance of the consent agenda. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So then I have to remember, then, what I'm, the question that I'm going to ask earlier?
All the way, all the way till the items removed from the consent agenda.
That's possible.
But we'll remind you.
Okay.
I've got a question on the business licenses. Those are path, or those are, isn't that administrative? Why do they, why are they brought to us when they can be actually passed by each one of the department heads and the city manager?
Well, I think you'll see under, we are in the process of redrafting, have redrafted the business licenses ordinance, and I think you'll see that process has changed.
Okay, so that will be then removed from our packet?
It will be...
More as communication, so we can...
It'll be in the clerk's report, right?
You want it to remain, I think there was a consensus, you wanted to know which ones were issued, but you didn't want to have to be in the approval loop. Remember, you just wanted to keep abreast of what.
Right.
And I think you'll see the new redraft accomplishes that. When are we, when are we bringing that, do you think?
We're waiting for a meeting with the fire department, I believe.
Yeah, because we had some inspection issues.
Yeah, we were thinking of modifying...
Because of the amount of inspections.
Right, right.
After that, it's all right.
Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, so on the consent agenda, let's go back to that for a second, so let's say we get, we got this today, and so Commissioner Verkanen had a question about the Newport Pub. So, how do, does she ask for that to be moved to items removed from the consent agenda?
Yes.
Or, okay, before we do any approval?
So, let's play it out, so he calls, the mayor calls the issue of the consent agenda. I move approval of the consent agenda, and then there's a second. Somebody could then say, "I would like to see item B removed from the consent agenda," and that'll get removed instead of discussed, and then you'll vote on the balance of the consent agenda. Hopefully, all the reasons things are on a consent agenda is they're items that normally are free from controversy and/or discussion needed, but yet are the business of the community and need to be acted on. So you lump them together, some people even put minutes in there, they lump as many things as they can into the consent agenda, so you take one vote on a host of items, for efficiency purposes. But if you have a question, it shouldn't be debated during the consent agenda, it should be removed and become an item, because you're going to talk about it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Cheryl, you look.
Maybe, maybe you should explain where they put it on the agenda after you remove it, so that they can discuss it.
It goes, if you look at page four, that paint...
No.
It goes to right after new business, I think.
Okay.
So, K.
Right. And the rationale there is this, is that under the theory of the Open Meetings Act, if we're going to now take up an issue with some amount of dialogue, as opposed to just approving it as a consent item, then it should form its own agenda item, and it should have its own place on the agenda. Another example of that would be when, and I don't normally say things about this, but when you do Commissioner's Privilege, for example, at near the end, that is not really a time to amend the agenda with a new topic. And sometimes, you can probably recall, we'll raise a topic during Commissioner's Privilege, and we'll really get into that topic during Commissioner's Privilege, that item should have been an agenda item, if we're going to speak about it that much, because the people involved in that topic should have had notice that that topic was going to be discussed by the commission, so you have to be careful not to use your Commissioner's Privilege time period to supplement the agenda with a new item, so...
Mainly for announcements.
It's mainly for you to...
Statements.
Echo something, or echo something that was already on the agenda, or a public pronouncement of something that's happening in the future, or to comment or praise something that has happened in the community in your opinion, but it's not the time to try to get a new item discussed, because that takes, you can see how that takes you afoul of the Open Meetings Act, and the person or persons involved in that topic aren't here, because they didn't know you were going to talk about that. So we have, we have to be very careful, we didn't get rid of Commissioner Privilege, it's still on there, but I'm just letting you know, we're going to watch a little closer that we're not using that as an agenda supplementation process. And Cheryl still looks perplexed.
No, I'm just the kind of person that's, if something's on my mind, I want to talk about it, I don't, if I delay it, then I'll forget my point. It's just me. I'll just have to make better notes.
But if you came to the meeting knowing that that issue was on your mind, I think you'll remember it.
Right.
Maybe...
Okay.
Any other questions on it?
Is this, is this the same thing you were asking about the inspections, or was it the one before this?
The inspect, no, that was a side note on the new business license.
One of the, one of the things we changed is consistent with current law, is when people come to speak, we can't really make them give us their address, they can volunteer their address, we should not compel that as a condition to talk.
I don't think we...
We don't.
We don't truly, most people just do it.
Right.
Any other questions, though, on this?
But when you say, though, public comment, do you, do you say that?
I say, please state your name and address. I ask them to.
Okay.
I don't, it's not required.
Yeah, we may change your language to, please state your name and if you wish, your address.
Yeah, because I noticed there was a couple people that hesitated.
Not longer.
All right, okay.
I'm using please, so it's a...
It's, I understand, but the case law that's come out of that's pretty strong, that people shouldn't feel the pressure of having to give an address as an entrance to being allowed to speak.
Yeah, school boards do it, they force you. I don't do it when I go there, I just, but they make you fill out a card, and if you don't fill out the card...
You don't speak.
Then you...
Same as Sinclair County, doesn't it?
Which is terrible.
Not a good process.
And I've tried to tell them that that's a violation.
All right.
But you didn't fill out your card, so you didn't listen to me.
Oh, no, I filled out part of it, I just didn't put the information that they wanted.
Any other questions on our procedures?
This is the draft, and for the rules of commission, should you move forward, it would be on the next agenda under new business for approval.
So do we, as, so do we need a motion tonight to move this on to the next step per our...
Yeah, I would, I think you need a motion to move forward and bring the rules of procedure back to new business at the next meeting.
So can I get a motion to do that?
Okay, I make a motion to bring the rules... Okay, I make a motion to bring the rules, procedures for the Marine City Commission to the next meeting, which would be September 1st?
Fourth.
Fourth.
Support.
Motion support. We've had quite a bit of discussion, but any more discussion on this topic? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to city manager's, manager's evaluation.
Okay.
I'm gonna leave that to you.
All right. So, we're at, if you look at our timeline, we're at the August 15th meeting here, and our plan was to review the evaluation tool together, and to kind of try to discuss each domain and element, so that we're all in the same understanding. Had a email conversation with Lisa, trying to figure out, for the sake of time, because, I mean, we could be here for three hours going through each one of these, you know, how to, how to go over each one of the elements in the, in the evaluation. With that, I think we decided that, because I, I actually suggested, so you need to thank Lisa for this, to actually have you kind of give an example of each one, but that, that would have taken forever, so, and we don't have forever. So, but, I think the big thing is, and Lisa actually put this out there, is that we all have the same understanding, basically, of this timeline. This timeline and, and, and what we have going on, I mean, we, we know that we have, the evaluations need to be turned in, either myself or Lisa, by September 19th. We're gonna get Elaine, the value, completed evaluation by September 26th, and then we'll review it, either in open or closed session, whatever Elaine decides, on October 3rd. Thing is, is that, the, the couple of things about the tool itself. We will be sending this tool out either, once we, Chris and I talk about, either Monday or Tuesday, we'll be sending it out to all the commissioners, and we'll send it out two ways. The digital version is in an Excel form, okay? That is our preferred, the, the preferred method, that we'd like this, the evaluation submitted. But we'll also have it in a PDF, so that you can do it in a PDF and just get us a copy of it. Either way, what needs to happen here is that every one of the elements, everything under, under each one, and organizational management, fiscal management, you have to put a rating in each one of those, okay? Especially if you're using the Excel version, because if you, the, the, the Excel version is set to, like, for example, it, it's set to average on four scores under organizational management. So, if you don't give it a score, it'll score it as a zero. So, you need to make sure that you're putting something in there, okay? Here's the thing, if you don't know, if you don't think you know what this, what that element is, or what it means, or what Elaine does to do, you can either contact me, contact Lisa, contact Dave, you know, con, go, go in, sit down with Elaine, go through it, sit down with Elaine and say, "Hey, I mean, I know Elaine, I'm sorry, I know you don't have all the time to do this, but I think it would help." Because I know last year, the first time I saw this, it would have helped me tremendously if I had done that with you, and I, I did just kind of go through and say, "You know what, I really didn't know," you know, so I didn't score it. And, and, and talking later, I realized I did know, so I should have scored it. So, and don't, don't hesitate to put in comments and suggestions. What I will tell you this thing will do, if you do it with the digital version, when you go in, if you're gonna give, and I'm gonna stick with organizational management, because it's the first domain up there, if you're gonna give a two for the first one, for the first element, provides that the organization does not violate agreement or appropriate established board procedures, you go to two, and you put, if you're using the Excel version, you're gonna put a two in there, not an X. You're gonna put a two in there. Okay, now, in the PDF, you can put an X, you can do whatever you want to. If you're gonna score it a three, you go over to the three column, and you put a three there, all right? So, you need to use the numbers. And this thing will magically give you an average rating down at the bottom, once you're done. You can do your comments and suggestions, and then what else, what else it will do is that it will take, so, for example, for organizational management, if you look on the last page of the evaluation, it will throw the average rating that you, that you came up with under organizational management on the last page for the average, and then it'll give your average total for this, for this eval, okay? So, what you need to do then is that you need to, if you're doing digital, you need to save it, okay? And then either through your city email, either email it to me or to Lisa, okay? And then you also need to print out a copy to sign it, because we're gonna need a signed copy of this, too, okay? With the PDF, all you have to do, I mean, you just have to go in and just, you know, mark the Xs, mark the elements, whatever you think the rating needs to be. Lisa and I will, will deal with the, the ratings on that, we'll do all the averaging for you there. Again, I just want to state again, do not hesitate to talk to Elaine, to see just what it is that she, because there's a lot of stuff that I know Elaine does behind the scenes that we're not aware of, okay? And a lot of it is in here, right? And I, and I will, I'll make sure that the directions and everything that I just said is, is in the email. Chris, I'll make sure that you have that, so that, you know, we, you know what to do. And, again, we prefer the digital copy, but if you're not, you don't have Excel, or you're not comfortable using Excel, we'll take the PDF.
Will we be able to do this on a mobile, or are we gonna have to do it on computer?
I would say you're gonna have to do it on a computer.
Be easier?
Easier.
Much easier.
Does anybody have any concerns with any of the topics? No?
I have one real quick question. What is the date range that we're evaluating over? Is it-
Last August, no.
August 1, 2?
August 1. She's always doing August, so. We hired you in August, right?
24.
Any more, any questions on this, besides making sure I get it done on time?
Everybody good?
Good.
Okay.
All right.
Chris, help touch bases with you.
Sounds good.
Okay, moving on to new business with DPW and police vehicle bids.
So, we posted the bids on our website and on Facebook, pretty much anywhere that was free, and outside of our office as well. We did the sealed bids, and we received a couple bids for some of the items, and one, we did not receive any bids. I did talk to Mike after we reviewed the bids, to see kind of where, where he thought they came in at. He thought that the Tahoe came in a little bit low. As far as the F-250, he actually thought that he could sell it for scrap for more than what the bid was. He thought that the Dodge Charger bid was pretty much in line with what he expected.
Well, can I get a motion to approve the bids?
We can do each of these separately.
Individually?
You're gonna have to, yeah.
Can we get a motion to approve the sealed bid for the Chevy 2014 Tahoe?
I'll make a motion that we approve the sealed bid for the Tahoe to Mike Weaver for $2,125.
Support.
Any questions on that one? Hearing none. Now, we are dealing with money, do we have to do a roll call? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkamen.
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we're moving on to the sealed bid for the Ford, the 2004 F-250.
So, do you not want to accept this bid, and do you want to go for scrap? Is that, was this an intent?
Well-
He'd have to take it in, and then-
Yeah, and he'd have to have it towed, because I guess it's locked up.
And then you gotta get a scrap certificate. There's a lot more to scrap than something.
Oh, I know.
My opinion is to let it go.
I would go with it.
I make a motion to accept the bid from Joe Tredaway for $385 for the 2004 F-250.
Support.
Any questions on that? And Chris, roll call vote.
Commissioner Verkamen.
No.
Mayor Van Bosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we're moving on to the 2012 Dodge Charger, with a high bid of $2,100.
I'll make a motion that we approve the bid from Dawson Haney for $2,100 for the 2012 Dodge Charger.
Support.
Any questions on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Van Bosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkamen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to the 74 O'Brien Power Rudder, model 888.
No bids were received. No motion necessary.
But we need to make a decision what we want to do with it. Mike, have any suggestions?
One of the things that I had kind of been talking about is when we move, we have a bunch of stuff in our basement to sell off or dispose of. In some way, we can hold it back until that.
Yeah, because it's fairly antiquated, and I used to use one, so, and it was old then, and that was in college, so, now they use water jets instead of power rotors, so, it's really, there's not too many uses for it anymore. If everyone's good, we'll just deal with it at a later date. All right, so we're good with that. Moving on to website recommendation.
I'd like to make a motion again to postpone this one for one more meeting also, because I just got in all the information on these, and I'd like to take a lookysee first, because I've been doing some work on this, but I couldn't get to it till today. So, just asking for one more meeting.
Is there any timeline on any of those bids?
I don't think so.
There's no real rush in getting it done anyway.
Just want to make sure we get a good one. Do it right.
Motion to table on the floor.
So, the information that you have, are we all gonna get that?
I don't know, I asked for it. You can ask for it.
That's a lot of paper.
Yeah, it's a lot of paper. Last time that, we had it on the agenda, had the, the stack of the 16 proposals, and had let everyone know, I had it in my office to look at it anytime.
This is just the four.
That, that actually would be a really good idea, to have that in the office, so that if we had a minute to come in and glance through those.
Oh, yeah, anytime.
Because I don't want you, I don't want to waste paper, and, because I mean, I trust your judgment when it comes to getting those bids.
All right, we got a motion on the floor for tabling.
Support.
Motion support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to dispersments, including payroll for $419,422 and 82 cents. Whoops.
I'll move we approve the dispersments of $419,422 and 82 cents.
Support.
Motion support. We have any questions on it? Yes, Lisa.
This one. How, just a question again, how are you handling the electricity at 300 Broadway?
It's split between the two.
So, this, this is just our amount? Or is this the-
We, I think, pay the whole bill, and then charge out.
Okay, and then, then you go back and, okay.
And does that break out the, like, the siren and all that, is?
We, we had an exemption for, there was like, the capped amount for the city to pay, and then the rest was split between the two.
Okay.
And Mary Ellen handles that all in-house.
Any other questions on dispersments? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkamen.
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh.
Yes.
Moving on to preliminary financial statement, there are reports, I need a motion to receive and file.
So, move.
Support.
Any questions on those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to the city manager's report.
This week, I attended a SEMCOG session that dealt with grants for mapping infrastructure. I'm working with Wade Trim on getting a proposal on assisting us with the grants. It's a 100% funded grant for mapping infrastructure that we have along federal aid roads, and potentially some grant money for local roads as well. So, I'll be working with them on putting together something. The dangerous building board that we had canceled, or that we had scheduled for Wednesday was canceled because of a unforeseen emergency from the building official. We'll be working Monday to reschedule that. Eagle did an annual inspection at our wastewater treatment plant, and found it to be in excellent condition and no issues. The return sludge pump replacement at the wastewater treatment plant has begun, that's gonna take about two weeks to fully install. The water plant high service pump replacement is scheduled in about two weeks, the parts in with the manu, or the installing agent, and just working on getting that on the calendar. Regarding the parklet, I did hear back from a representative with Kaboom, they would be open to hearing about another location, it would obviously be subject to approval from them, if we wanted to relocate that parklet. So, I don't know if we want to bring that back on the agenda for discussion. Can't hurt.
I'd like to see it brought back up, yes.
So, we'll get that on the next agenda, then. That's all I have.
Any questions for the city manager?
He came up with a point of inspections, and it led me to think something else, so, I just wanted to know, who does our liquor control inspection? Do we sub that out, or do the police department do it?
I don't have an answer for you, I think it's the state.
State does.
You got a, we got a contract with them to do that?
The, the state controls all of them, and they'll do that locally.
Our agent, our, our local agent takes care of all that.
Local state agent?
Well, townships, you do, they do it through either the constable or the sheriff's department, that's why, just wondering who was doing it.
My understanding is, at any point in time, the police can go in and do spot inspections.
Just a question.
But then, as far as regulations for the law, that would be the state's responsibility.
Any other questions for this, yes, Lisa?
I've got several. What's the status of the West Boulevard paving issue? We're almost coming up to its one-year anniversary, and it's not fixed yet. Are we gonna get to it, or not, this year?
I keep asking Mike about that, so, still working on getting that.
All right. The Safe Route is a school thing, I see you have on here, that you're waiting on the state for some of it, but we got two weeks to go for school, and the kids are gonna start using it, and nobody has a clue. I know the last time I talked to you, I was told that if they press the button, the lights just flash, and that doesn't mean anything for people to stop, which I find hard to believe, but, but the whole intent of this was, so that the kid could safely get across the street and the crosswalk. So, I think we need to really know how this is supposed to work before school starts.
Yep.
And we only got about two weeks left.
Yep, working on getting something.
All right. I noticed the beach walkway from the pavilion to the beach doesn't meet yet, are we gonna be finishing that? There's a section in there, they paved, and then they left a big spot. It's just, I thought it was gonna connect into the beach sidewalk on the one side, and there's just nothing there. I saw the new wayset, finding signs went up, but I know one thing, I, I don't know how to give you this one, the biggest issue we have on this side of town is people looking for the court, and the fire department, and the police department, and we used to have a sign- And we used to have a sign, kind of, we have a library sign, but now all the ones telling them where to get to the court. So, what they do is they stop at all the local stores and ask them all the time. So, the signs kind of would've been a good, just for those few items, so that they know where they are, since they're all down this way. I know I brought you the petitions last meeting. I was hoping to see something on the agenda this meeting for those. Will they be, is that gonna be up for discussion?
The developer petitions. I'm working on getting a legal opinion from the attorney regarding that.
I was asked to give you some guidance on the role of the planning commission with respect to site plan, and your role.
Okay.
With respect to site plan, if any.
Okay.
And I'll issue that shortly. We just talked about it, I think, the day before yesterday.
Okay. The 15-minute parking space hasn't been marked. We're over the year on that one. Is that gonna be taken care of? I know they striped everything else, but missed that.
Yeah, I talked to Mike about it. He unfortunately did miss getting that one on their list, so he's gonna have them...
Okay. The last, and not least, when, what's the status of the house destroyed by the fire for everybody, so that they know, the people in those neighborhoods know what's going on?
I'll be meeting with Susan to discuss the agenda for the dangerous building board on Monday, when she's back in the office. We're planning on actually sending out 300-foot notices, and doing it like a regular public notice, so that we can get a little more information out there to the people, so that they're involved in the process.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else have questions for the city manager? If not, moving on to Commissioner Privilege. Cheryl, would you like to get us started?
I'm good.
Bill?
I'm good.
I have nothing to say.
Oh, no, come on, now, this isn't because of what I said.
Oh, no.
Don't take that much credit.
We're afraid.
Somebody say something.
Oh, I will.
All right.
I'm gonna pass. Honestly, I don't have anything tonight.
No, it's the first time since I've been here.
Well, since I'm the only one speaking, that kind of happens a lot. Hey, can I get everyone to, attention to go to 300 Broadway on August 22nd. They're having a grand reveal for the River Actine Zone on what they have done so far. They'd love to see, have everyone come out and see all the improvements that they've made in the bathrooms and in the floors in Phase 1, since we haven't gone into Phase 2 yet. Also, the anticipated opening will be late September. I kind of jested, the date keeps moving. Is it something similar to a certain inn in another community that we're talking about? Laura wanted me to make a joke about that, so, we'll see.
What time in August?
Oh, I didn't ask that.
7:00 P.M.
7:00 P.M. Thank you, audience. Because I asked her today, because Mr. Merchant wasn't here to help announce this, so, with that, I don't have anything else. It was a great maritime days. We had great weather. It wasn't too hot. It was very enjoyable. We sold a lot of tickets for the Lions Club.
Sold out.
Sold out. Wheelbarrow chair, so it was partially a successful, at least for the Lions Club. With that, I'd like to go into closed session to consult with the city attorney regarding pending litigation for the vacant parcel the city acquired through foreclosure. Former owner is trying to reclaim this property. So, could I get a motion to enter into closed session?
So moved.
Support.
After completion of the closed session, there may or may not be further business. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Hendrick.